Welcome to the meeting order is Tuesday, June 8th of 2021. This is our virtual city council meeting and the first item of business would be our roll call.
Paravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Hirsch. I see all the person here, I don't hear her, so I will say that she's here. Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki. All the person Lagaki. Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Dumacher.
Here.
Tukowski.
Here.
And Vanegas. Alright, there are 10 others present and for now, all there is Lagaki and Vanegas are absent and excused.
Alright, thank you Holly. The minutes and reports are in the packet, so we'll go right to the public comment period. And I do have two people that are signed up to speak tonight. And the first one is Morgan Elliott. If Morgan is on the line, you would have three minutes to speak. And you can come out whenever you're ready.
In prior meetings, as been mentioned, that no one has been able to find a municipality in which a mobile vendor is allowed to have a drive-through. So I'd like to spend my time today talking to you about other mobile vendors on private property that offer a drive-through, but I will mostly be focusing on two, because I know their history as well as where they are today. Broadhead, Oregon, Evansville, and Mossin are all municipalities, which have at least one non-permanent vendor. As far as I'm aware, these municipalities do not have specific regulations for drive-through mobile vending. They just choose not to legislate it for whatever reason. The two that I'm most familiar with are located in Broadhead. One of them is an ice cream place called Tasty Cream. They have both a drive-through and a walk-up window in a similar fashion to the way we currently operate. They have no curbing, no barrier between the drive-in and walk-up areas, and no arrows directing traffic. Tasty Cream has been around for 30 years or more, and is an absolute staple of the town. People from surrounding communities patronize Tasty Cream, and then spend time at the thrift shop or game store downtown. Similarly, we've had customers tell us they come from Edgerton, Evansville, Oregon, and McFarland, which helps to bolster local economy. According to some people in previous meetings, our setup is an accident waiting to happen. Tasty Cream has been around for 30-plus years, and there's not been a single incident of a vehicle damaging a trailer or hitting the pedestrian. Damaging the trailer or hitting a pedestrian. We are going on 10 months now of the same track record. The other one I know of is Bowinkles Coffee. They offer only drive-through service because of location and logistics. The reason I bring them up is because they started out as a small trailer like us and have made upgrades over the years as they are able. They now have what appears to be a large trailer on foundation with a log cabin look. Like us, they started out small and grew into something larger and more permanent. Keeping these five businesses and four cities in mind, I ask that you remove the drive-through ban portion of the proposed legislation, but to pass the rest. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Phil Harrison.
In the last meeting, we were asked if we had considered moving our location to the west end of the parking lot. Since this is leased by another party other than who we currently have a lease with, we do not feel as if that is a viable request. That's not to say that we haven't considered it, because we have. And we don't see a way that could be feasible due to how Tractor Supply utilizes their portion of the lot, that they obviously have full rights to with their lease. Throughout these meetings, there have been countless mentions by almost everyone involved since the introduction of the drive-through ban of public safety concerns. Yet the only specific concerns we've heard are pedestrians near vehicles and the stacking of vehicles impeding traffic. Respectfully, traffic not in the public right-of-way is not a public safety concern, it's a public convenience concern. One which Pick and Say would promptly force compliance to remedy, or terminate our agreement. In regards to pedestrians near vehicles, I'd like to point out the recent reverse parade with mixed pedestrians and vehicles in the same line for Seton to Mine. It's a parking lot that we operate in with both pedestrians and vehicles literally every day going in and out of the other businesses in the lot. I'd also like to point out that I've spoke with another party that has a direct interest in the safety of our operation, to the tune of $2 million, our insurance company. They don't seem to have any concerns with us operating a drive-through. In fact, I'm sure our agent would like to be informed of the specific safety risks the city is so concerned about, since they do have such a vested interest in the situation. There have also been multiple mentions about other municipalities and no reference within those municipalities' ordinances to allowing drive-throughs for mobile vendors. Those municipalities, as Morgan mentioned, may have elected to not regulate it. You also have that ability. With the ability to amend the ordinance at your leisure in the future, you can elect to legislate it at a later date. That is what we are asking of the council tonight. Please pass the mobile vending ordinance presented to you, with the exception of the drive-through ban portion, so that mobile vendors do have a clear framework to follow, and be able to operate within the city. We request you modify the recommendation from the plan commission and no longer include this restriction for the enacted ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, and those are the two speakers that were signed up to speak tonight. Next item would be communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members? Alright, hearing none, I have a few. The first one is, I have a couple of proclamations in the packet. We have one for Juneteenth, which is coming up, on June 19th, which is a Saturday. And there is a celebration that's going to happen at the Course House. So I wanted to let council members and community members know that there'll be activities and people there from 5:00 to 8:00 on June 19th. So we want to celebrate that day. And also, June is Pride Month. There's a proclamation in the packet for Pride Month as well. And then the third item is, is I wanted to let the community know that we're working together with the Chamber of Commerce and the Fair Board to consolidate and bring fireworks on July 4th on the RDA site down near Mount Park. So you can expect if the weather cooperates that there'll be a show. That'll be sponsored by the city and the Chamber and the Fair Board, so we're excited about the partnership. And then one other quick one, we did have a virtual hybrid meeting before this meeting tonight for the Finance Committee. We actually carried it and everything, and things went very well. So we're really excited that we'll be able to go in-person or hybrid if people feel more comfortable or it's more convenient for them as soon as, you know, the council is ready to do so. So I anticipate that maybe sometime in July, but we haven't really set a date for that. But we are running another test tomorrow with our leadership team, which is our management team. We typically meet every two weeks, so we're going to run another test tomorrow as well and see how things go. So we can continue to improve how that works. And we'll have instructions. It's pretty simple. Those that were on the Finance Committee didn't seem to have any difficulty with it at all. That's all I had. Other, once again, are there any communications from council members?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Could you explain what a hybrid meeting is for the listening, for the audience that's watching us today?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we typically have either in-person meetings or we have virtual meetings. A hybrid is a combination. So you can have people that are in a room together, as well as people that would call in. On this particular meeting, we use the Zoom platform or the GoToMeeting platform. Going forward for the virtual meetings, we'll have to use a Zoom platform. For whatever reason, it's more compatible to the system that we have in our council chambers. We have to run basically the equipment through the WSTO and the council chambers' microphones. So those that are in the room will literally have their computers and unmute, whether it's their Zoom or their actual computer device. And then all the sound will go through the microphone and the speaker that comes into the room. And correct me if I'm wrong, people that called in for the Finance Committee meeting, you just logged into your Zoom account and you interacted as normal. There are a few bells and whistles on Zoom that we can use for virtual hand raising and that sort of thing that we might want to utilize to make the meetings a little bit more orderly. Is there anything I'm missing from anybody on the Finance Committee?
I don't think so.
It seemed to go fairly well. We had one little feedback issue that was easily corrected, and that was about it.
Getting used to a couple of the different features that are available for Zoom versus GoToMeeting, and once you get used to where everything is on there and where to look for things, wasn't so bad.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, and any other communications from councils one last time? And I do have on here Riverfront Development Environmental Presentation by True North Consultants. Is Chris on the line here?
Yes, Tim, I'm here.
Okay, how would you like to do this? Do you want to have the screen?
If you want to. Yeah, allow me to present and I can put up the presentation.
Alright, that'd be fine. Holly will turn over the screen to you. And while she's doing that, once again, thank you for being here again tonight. I know you have a lot on your plate, and we appreciate you following up on the report you did and working with the redevelopment authority to put this presentation together tonight. It's, I think, in a format that's going to be real, a lot easier for us to digest than reading, you know, pages of reports. Although, some people have the gift to be able to do that. Can let me know when you're ready, and the floor will be yours.
Sure, I think, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Alright, so you guys have asked me to come in and kind of review everything that we've talked about. We had another meeting and we talked about how best to kind of present this to you all to give you a better idea of what's going on down at the Riverfront Development and where we sit right now. So first thing I wanted to talk about was, you know, we did this originally, and we had some assumptions that we revised based on, you know, more knowledge is the best way of putting it. But these are the areas that I'm going to talk about. The assumptions, original and current, the volume calculations and tonnage calculations, estimated costs for remedial actions, we'll talk about the brownfield grant that's available, and then what we think could be the final cost for the property. So our original assumptions when we made the initial presentation to everybody assumed that everything had to be, any material that was excavated from the property would have to be removed from the site for disposal. And it also assumed that we were going to be cleaning up to the most stringent DNR cleanup levels, which was the protection of groundwater standard. So based on some discussions that we've had with Brink's team, and internally, we've been able to come back with, you know, different assumptions. And that is, some of the material that is present on the property can remain on-site. It doesn't have to be removed off-site for disposal. Only our remedial action soils need to be hauled off-site. And the remedial action has a defined remediation objective that's protective of the DNR's direct contact cleanup level, which is a little less stringent than what we had before. So that's allowed us to kind of really narrow down what actually needs to be removed from the property in order to get this moving forward. When we calculated the volume of the area, the volume of material that we need to come out, we, again, we use that cleanup objective. We identified the horizontal extents of the contamination. And we applied the excavation depths for the development, and then also to meet the cleanup objectives that we have. And then it's pretty simple, Matt, to, you know, come up with the volume of the areas that were going to be removed from the property. In the construction industry, unfortunately, we have two kind of different units. You know, contractors tend to work in cubic yards, whereas our industry, the environmental industry, needs to work in tons. And the reason for that is measurement and disposal, right? We can't measure a cubic yard as well or as accurately as we can measure a ton. We can weigh things, but we can't really correct for volume. So there's a, we needed to come up with a method, and we didn't do this, but the industry has come up with a method to convert cubic yards to tonnages. And the standard across the industry is about one and a half tons per cubic yard. Some examples, you know, a cubic yard of sand is 1.3 tons. A cubic yard of DOT gravel is about 1.5 tons. Topsoil comes out to be about 1.2 tons. And these are estimates, these are, you know, industry standards that people use. So it's not something that we're applying to, you know, that's different than what's typically going on. So for our project, the assumptions that we made for volumes and tonnages, you know, the industry standard was to use 1.5 tons per cubic yard. Our standard at True North for budgeting purposes is to increase that to 2.0 tons per cubic yard. And the reason for that is because it allows us to account for, or gives us room to account for varying soil types, varying water content, and then also allows us some room if there's additional soil that has to be removed. You have a little bit of a factor in there to account for some of that. So we use two tons per cubic yard, and we base all of our estimates off of that number. So for the remedial action, you know, the assumptions that we made, again, we calculated the volumes using design team standards, using cleanup objectives. We're using a 2.0 tons per cubic yard conversion. And then we're only dealing with the export or removal of contaminated material necessary for remedial actions at the property. So that's only the stuff that has to be removed in order to meet DNR requirements. There's, you know, five areas at the property that need to be remediated. Three within the Public Works Facility area. One area associated with the Milfab lead, an area associated with the Roberts Electric. You know, we looked at all of these, and in the next table that I'm going to show you, I've got actually two sections to that table to allow you to see the difference between 1.5 tons and 2.0 tons. So in this table, we have, the Public Works Facility has the three areas. The Roberts Electric area has one area, and the Milfab area has one area. This is the approximate square footage that we're estimating based on the extents of the contamination with the cleanup objective in mind. The depths are based off of either the cleanup objective or the need for excavation due to the development. And then this is the cubic yards associated with each one of those things. In this portion of the table, this is using the one and a half tons per cubic yard conversion. And this portion of the table comes up with the two tons. So you're talking about, what is that, 4,000, 4,700 roughly? Tons difference between a 1.5 and a 2.0 conversion factor? So we combined these into three sites for estimating purposes. The first one is the Public Works Site, the next one is the Milfab Lead Site, and the Roberts Electric Site is the last one. We imported the Table 1 totals using the conversion factor of two tons per cubic yard. And then the rates that we have in this next table are for tipping landfill disposal and transportation, hauling that material to the landfill, are based on our previous, you know, interactions with the landfill and estimates from transportation firms about what it costs to get the material from point A to point B. Again, we're only dealing with remedial action because it's the only thing that needs to be done is to take it out. It's the only part that needs to be removed from the property. We don't need to remove everything, we only have to remove some of them. The rest of the material can be reused on-site. The other site investigation and closure tasks that are associated with, in that table, are associated with taking each one of these sites then to closure within the DNR. And then again, I want to stress that we're only talking about remedial action soil for disposal, and that's the only part of this that's eligible for a WDC brownfield grant. So this is the table that we just talked about. Again, the remedial action for the three sites, the Public Works Site, the Milfab Lead Site, and the Roberts Electric Site. You know, we've kind of put in the big costs for each one of these areas. The other site investigation and the closure are, you know, taking each one of these three sites then to closure for the DNR. These are going to be incurred regardless of what, whether or not the grant goes on. But this is kind of stuff that's going to have to happen outside of the grant. So we've taken all these numbers and we've totaled them up over here, and this is our grant-eligible amount. Again, this is for the Phase 1 portion of the development and the remedial actions for the three areas that are included with that Phase 1 portion of the development. So the WDC brownfield grant is typically applied for by the developer, so they would apply for this, and it would cover the remedial action costs for the three areas that we're talking about. The next table that I'm going to present to you is Table 3. And again, we pulled in the quantities from Table 2. We only included the cost for the Phase 1 portion of the development. We're only dealing with the remedial action portion of the project. And that's the only part that is eligible for a brownfield grant. And recently, the WDC has changed their maximum award amount. So it's now, the maximum award amount for the WDC is now $250,000. So this is the table that I was just talking about that kind of presents the total costs for the project with the inclusion of a WDC brownfield grant. And you can see that this is, you know, the remedial action costs here, minus the brownfield costs, this is the portion that's left over. And then these are the other costs associated with the site investigation enclosure. And it brings you up to a grand total here. So there's three separate sites. The remedial actions are required at each site. We've got a total quantity of soils estimated to be removed of about 9,400 cubic yards, 18,800 tons. This is our estimated cost for the remedial action, our assumed grant award amount, the total other costs for investigation enclosure, and our total estimated project cost for the city. And that's it. That's all I've got. There is, in the packet that was sent out, there is also a, and I don't know if I can change this or not, let's try. This is the map of the site. And so the three areas that we talked about with the cost for the remedial action on the Public Works Site include these pink areas. The Milfab Lead Site is this green area here, this box. And the Roberts Electric Site is this purplish area up here.
Alright, thank you, Chris. I would open it up for any questions.
Thanks, Chris. This seems to be a much more concise estimate than what we were working with prior. So this looks decent to me, especially with going with the different stringency, what the DNR is recommending for the site on there, so this looks good to me.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, and I guess then at this point, oh, go ahead.
I remember our last presentation, and remedial action is the term that's being recommended by the DNR. And these estimates are very different and much more palatable that I can see from a budget perspective than the millions of dollars we were talking about, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Could you, thank you, and could you speak more to help me understand the difference between the prior estimate and that it was a lot more conservative? And what might not be removed? Just kind of wanting to understand a little bit more about how is it that we've landed just at the remedial action decision that's recommended by the DNR?
Well, so let me back up and, you know, the DNR, the original assumptions that we had out here was really conservative, and it was based on assuming that, you know, anything we touched out here would have to be hauled off for disposal. And it also included remediating areas to a much more stringent level. So we went back and talked to Brink's team and talked about what they needed for their development. And we also looked at the data to really understand, could we, do we have to remove everything from the property? Or could we reuse this on-site? Because we weren't sure what Brink's team at the time that we did that first one, what their expectations were as far as, you know, having to remove soil from the property or not. Well, it turns out that they really didn't have a lot of material that would have to be removed from the property when they do their engineering calculations. And so that helped us really kind of, you know, back off of disposing of everything that we touched too. We can reuse this other material on the property and really focus on only the areas that need to be remediated. And so those two things really, you know, dropped the totals down tremendously. Obviously, you know, you went from many, many different numbers to a much more palatable number, as you just put it, right?
I appreciate you filling in a little bit more of those details. And, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, all the person Hunt, go ahead.
Thank you, Chris. That certainly is a more palatable number. One area that was a variable with very little clarity was the Highway Trailer Building. I don't know if that falls outside of Phase 1 or not. But did you manage to get any clear idea of the cost of dealing with the Highway Trailer Site?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a good idea of that just yet. Although I did briefly look at the report that I think has been issued, or at least some of the data. And it doesn't look to me that it says, I don't think it's any worse than any of the other properties here. But having said that, I don't, you know, we're not looking at, because of the way that Brink's design is laid out, I think there's going to be a lot more of the material on those other properties that's going to be reused on-site somewhere. So I don't think there's going to be much of a remedial action effort up there. I'm sure there's going to be some. but I don't know offhand what that is. And honestly, I didn't, didn't get a chance to really pin down with the data that I saw whether or not it was a widespread problem or not. I don't believe it is, just a cursory glance, but I don't have any numbers to, to put, put forth at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else have a question or a comment?
I do. I think this, this presentation is a lot more, Les. Alder Legaki says a lot more palatable, and thank you for putting together such a great presentation. That's very easy to understand. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I guess at this point, I'll, I'll call on Attorney Dragney kind of, or even Rodney as far as what next steps might look like now that we have this information. Have you guys thought about that at all, Matt?
Yeah, I think the next steps will be to bring, take the, the agreements that have been prepared and are basically ready to take those to the redevelopment authority and to the city council for action. We'll need the developer to confirm that the developer is satisfied with those agreements as well, but they've been, they're basically prepared. They've been distributed to the developer. I think both the city council and the RDA have at least seen summaries of those agreements, so this, this won't be the first time that you're seeing these. So I think that'll be the next step.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Schiel? I know you've been pretty involved with this process.
No, I think Matt summed it up well. Certainly looking forward to moving forward with this. Chris and I'll talk about the, the next steps with the DNR specifically as this moves through as well.
All right. Thank you. Any last words from council members? All right. We'll move on to the next item. Thanks again, Chris. We look forward to seeing more of you as we move through this process. And then Holly, you can send the screen back to me. The consent agenda is in the packet. There's a couple items on there. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. Motion in a second. Would anybody like anything acted on separately? And you can see it's that time of the year where Holly's been busy going through and working on liquor licenses, and there's a number of them here. And I believe that all went through public safety as well, so everything looks in order. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion does carry, and that does take us actually to the liquor license renewals. That's a separate resolution here, and that came from public safety. Alder Person Jensen.
I'm sorry, you're going to?
I think we just approved that in the consent.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was part of the consent agenda. Okay. There was four items in there. For some reason, I was thinking there was two. They're on the second page here. All right. I'll move on to old business then. Ordinance 13 of 2021. This is a second reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 13 of 2021, amending zoning code sections related to outdoor sales, mobile vending and mobile vending at special events. And this is the second reading and ISO move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. And Alder Person Caravelo, anything else you want to add to our previous discussions?
These are, just as we've discussed before, proposed amendments to the zoning code to allow mobile food vending on private property and to clear up regulations for general temporary outdoor sales. And as mentioned by the, during public comment, this does not allow for drive-through mobile vending. And for more enlightenment or clarification, I'm sure Plan Director Schiel could help us out with this.
Yeah, certainly. If there's questions, I'll certainly work with you. As you know, the city attorney's office worked with us a great deal on this. This came out of the Plan Commission after a fair amount of deliberation and number of months working on different iterations. But this was, I believe, the unanimous recommendation that came out of the Plan Commission.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders?
I have one. In light of what, we had a couple of public comments that referenced some drive-through instances in communities around us like Broadhead. Have we looked at those? I know we were not aware of those to begin with, but now that this has come to light, is the Plan Commission planning on looking at those to like amend this ordinance perhaps down the road if this gets passed tonight to see if that would actually work in our community?
Well, I would say the examples that were given tonight were not given at the Plan Commission. And I don't know if, if they're apples to apples. I haven't seen, you know, a site plan or anything like that.
That's fine. I'm not, you know, let's, let's move forward. Now that they've come to light, will the Plan Commission kind of take a look at Broadhead and the other communities' mobile food cart drive-through to see if in the future, if we wanted to amend our ordinance that it would be deemed appropriate and safe for our community? That was the question, not to like say that whether or not Plan Commission had looked at it in the past. I just want to make sure that we're, I know we've done a lot of due diligence with trying to find other communities that allowed it and did not find any, but apparently the public has, so I would just recommend that the Plan Commission look at Broadhead and the other communities that they mentioned ordinances to see if, if we'd want to amend this at some point.
Certainly take that under consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
It's our Alder Person Hunt?
Kind of to piggyback on what Regina was saying, our ordinance right now specifically precludes outlaws the drive-through option. I think it would be feasible in, in some circumstances if we created the, the wording, maybe we'd make it very stringent. Maybe it would be very difficult for people to find a circumstance that would comply with a law we wrote. But I think it would be good to have wording that guided us if someone wanted to have a drive-through. So I would agree that an amendment that would create language that specified what we would have to see in order to allow a drive-through would be a good addition to the, to the law.
Well, I could tell you that the Plan Commission had that conversation as well as we had that, staff had the conversation with the city attorneys. And as mentioned at the last meeting by Attorney Schneider, you know, when you start going under conditional use permits, now you're, you're enacting the potential of X-67 into the conversation. We really, you know, we're trying to get away from conditional use permits and not have more of them. State law changed a couple of years ago, so that really does complicate trying to create the criteria for something like this. So, you know, I would say that we have had that conversation and, and the Plan Commission based on that, you know, this is the recommendation that came out of there.
Okay.
I had a question if I could. This is Lisa.
Sure, go ahead.
And this may be for Director Schiel, and I apologize because I actually meant to send an email and realized that I didn't send it, so I, I read in the hub and I know sometimes things can be, may or may not be 100% accurate, but I did see something in there about Madison doesn't specifically approve them, but they don't prohibit them. And there was language in the hub that said something about all food carts that operate on private land must get approval from the planning department to determine whether the food cart is in a safe and appropriate place. And so I, I'm just curious, Director Schiel, if this is familiar to you at all, and I apologize I didn't send the email earlier just to see if you had any understanding of what they do in Madison.
Well, certainly we don't have the staff or the frequency of issues to, to evaluate such as Madison, but I'm not familiar with their process there other than referencing the fact that there, there isn't an explicit regulation as, as you've described. I also understand it doesn't sound like they have explicit criteria to allow them. In other words, criteria that indicates where it could be possible or where it shouldn't be possible. So I think there's some ambiguity about that step that would have to be contemplated if we looked at doing that here.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where I was headed because I, I, I'm uncomfortable with prohibiting all drive-through if there were safe circumstances, but I'd be really interested to see they must have some internal parameters if accurate. So I can, I guess I'm a little bit leaning toward what Regina and Fred said, whether or not it makes sense for us to see if there are some safe parameters. And I'm interested in what the Planning Commission will say about that, because I know you all have met a lot. So there may be some hiccups with, with that, but I just wanted to get some feedback if I could, please.
Lisa, I can, I'll share with you, here, here's, I did have a conversation by email with Madison, Fitchburg, and Manona. And, you know, Madison basically said, and you can see it on the screen now, they're not aware of having any requests to operate a drive-through operation. And it's their understanding that the locations for the food carts are usually in a parking stall and that a drive-through operation would not work. So that, that was the response I had from Madison, and then it talks a little bit about the review process, which is similar to what we're doing. And then, you know, Fitchburg reached out to them as well. And, you know, after I reached out to them, basically they said, having heard this, you know, they may want to incorporate not allowing it as well. And then Manona was kind of the same thing where this is kind of a unique request. And based on, you know, the follow-up that I did, it doesn't seem like at least Madison or Fitchburg would be willing to honor the request. Manona really didn't say one way or another, although they did talk about some of the language that we have as well as far as improving, impairing the traffic flow and obstructing vision for driveway sidewalks and other areas. So certainly, you know, this is kind of new territory for everybody and, you know, that's kind of where we landed. But, you know, I did read that article as well, so I did follow up on that.
Thank you for doing that. That's helpful.
Mayor Swadley?
Go ahead, Alder Person Legaki.
Thank you. I, I, I agree that we, I really feel that we are in some new territory. And I know that we struggle with trying to help develop small business, and yet, safety or the elderly or the safety of utility workers is, is always at the forefront as well. And as I think about our riverfront development coming and drawing people, if you offer me a little latitude, I just went, came back from a very cool mountain biking trip to Bentonville, Arkansas, a city that used to be the size of Stoughton. And it has grown immensely, but they, they've created these huge, amazing mountain bike and experience. And they're now very big and they've grown, but I really feel like we might be being a little short-sighted with our future projects. I know Greg mentioned at the last council meeting that Alder Jensen mentioned that he could see us having food carts maybe out by the, because they clearly are a cultural movement. Things are happening. And I really think that we're limiting ourselves. And I think we're also sending a message that we might be really limiting a business and their, their growth. And I don't think it's at the expense of safety. I really just think there are some ways that we should look at how we're looking at the safety on this. And so knowing that we have this new landscape coming, literally, I don't want to tie our hands, but yet I do believe in safety. And I don't think, I, I really feel that the intentions are there, and I believe in our planning department enough to do this. I would like to put forward an amendment of section 20, item H, that we remove that from this ordinance for now because I believe those powers still are invested in planning. And I, I, I want some time and I want to see what comes with our projects. And I would like to move that we remove comment H under section 20 of this ordinance.
All right. So there's a, a motion. Is there a second?
Could I see a second? There it is.
Yep, there it is.
Okay. Thank you. I would second it.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. Anything else you'd like to add? Jean, it's your motion.
No, I, I, I believe that we have the, I believe that we have the ability to help find safe ways, but, I mean, food carts have been being processed for decades. And 2015 that they, they actually began building them with drive-through windows. That was six years ago, and we're, we first have our, the issue coming now, but they've been marketed. And even though I know we didn't find ordinances that speak to it, I, I think it's a, I think that there are plenty of, plenty of cities who during COVID had people driving up to food carts. When you go look out there in the public media, I found articles about that. And so I just think with our growth, I would like us to be more careful. I don't want us to limit this of this way at this time. I think it's bad optics, and with our future growth, I still feel that the safety issues are being addressed, and I think it ties our hands in this short. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from any other Alders?
Jean, just as a note, section 22 and 24, I believe, also contain that language in there.
I would ask that if I could, if I could please amend my amendment that all aspects of the section, I only saw 20. I did do a quick read further. I would trust Brett's wonderful detail to make sure that we are removing anything about the drive-through, knowing that the source resides in planning. I ask that all mentions of it in the sections be removed.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I guess Alder Legaki, by removing all aspects and not replacing them with actual recommendations of how to create drive-through safely, you're just assuming that each food cart is going to figure that out by not having any criteria for that. Or are you asking them to come up with what the Plan Commission did not want to do was to have a conditional use permit for each application that then has to be reviewed individually and make individual decisions on each application of whether or not the Plan Commission thought it would be safe or not.
Right. I, I feel, and my knowledge is a little limited. I feel that the ordinance, that the safety factors, that the review process, and, and I realize that we're seeing this as a temporary And and I realize that we're seeing this as a temporary, trying to move away, but. I I believe that food carts and these types of uh ways of vending, more is going to come our way.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I think it's going to reveal itself how best to do it. And right now, it might, if we, if we, if he renews his permit, right? Which he'll need to, because it's only a hundred eighty days that's coming up, it's reviewed there. So I think with the the permit at the application. I, my hope is that all of the safety issues and how they're going to vend are are going to be addressed at that time. If I am understanding correctly.
I I think you're, according to what the plan commission already looked at their application, they would deny it. We're we're not, we're actually setting up vendors for failure without. Plan commission coming up with guidance of how to create. Uh, drive-through safely. And my idea was for them to review Broadhead. And those other communities to try to figure out a way to set it up safely. As as, but that's not what you're doing. By eliminating it. The plan commission doesn't have to do any more work and it's a basically a free-for-all. Uh, for each vendor coming up with their own plan, which is without any guidance. And that actually is not the way to govern.
Regina, my intent, I agree with you. And my intent, and I would not want to see that happen, my intent. Is to say that I believe by outlawing any drive-through through this ordinance is a mistake, given the growth coming our way. But I also believe and learned from trying to do our our resolution uh in council and writing. I I don't believe that we are at a place to offer the right language. Maybe somebody out there has. I I know I have not um offered language to replace H here and now. I I just want to simply remove it and I would like to not put this. Part of this person's business out and I would like us to come to a better review. And even if we have to create a a special ad hoc and or like a short term. Um, to better get this represented, I I really feel that we need to look beyond just ordinances or a few selected. Uh municipalities. So I I think this is coming in our direction. But Regina, I agree with you. By removing that, I I would not want to have this guy's whole license be denied. Uh, or go away, but I I really believe that this is limiting. I think we can do better than this.
Right, but that's not what you're doing. By removing it, it it's it's setting up people up. Because we don't have those things. What you might want to do is send it back to plan commission to come up with. Guidelines based on other communities. Then they actually have to do that. As opposed to eliminating it and then they have, the plan commission has to, one by one, determine whether or not it's. It it's um a good plan or not. And that's not what the plan commission had wanted to do. They wanted either set guidelines and so. I guess if you.
Let me jump in there because others may want to speak and and, you know, I guess one thing is, is I I I'm not so sure that the council can. You know, direct something back to the plan commission. They've already made the recommendation. They're a separate authority, a separate body. Uh, but I guess at this point I want to hear from our attorney and and what the impact of removing this would be from. I guess it's all three sections. So I know Attorney Schneider is on the line and she's the one that's been working on this the most.
Yeah, and and I'm on the line too. If I could, um, uh, Rachel uh joined us late. Because I sent her a text and asked her to to jump in. Let me just clarify a couple of things, though, to make sure everyone understands. I think I understand a couple of things that I want to make sure you all understand. One is that the way this ordinance has been structured. It has been designed so that permits of this nature, approvals of this nature can be um. Handled administratively by the zoning department staff. So if someone submits an application, it will not go to the plan commission. This will be a staff level review and the intention is to provide very clear guidelines. So that staff knows whether an application meets the requirements. Or does not meet the requirements and does not have to exercise discretion. And engage in the kind of exercise that one might see. In what we're used to in, say, a conditional use permit review type of process. The entire structure of this ordinance, it's more like a a building permit review process where. Someone wants a building permit to build a single-family home, they submit an application to the building inspector. And there are very clear standards that govern that decision. You either meet the electrical code requirements or you do not. For example, okay? So if if the, I guess my question to both Rachel. And also the planning director Shale would be, if the motion is adopted, and just to clarify, as I understand, the motion is to. Remove all language in the draft ordinance that in any way says or indicates. That a drive-through is not allowed. Okay? That's my understanding of the motion. And so the question I would have is, if that's the case. Um, would uh the zoning administrator or the person administering this ordinance? What if any authority would they have? And do they have adequate tools with the remaining language in the ordinance? To make a decision as to whether to allow a drive-through? Would they simply have no choice but to say, yes, I'm approving that? Um, or would they have the ability um to um. Make a judgment call about whether a drive-through would be allowed or not based on other language in the ordinance? And I don't know the answer to that. So if either Attorney Snyder or Planning Director Shale has any input on that, I'd love to hear it.
Well, in my view, I think the only remaining language that would be in any way applicable would be the language that relates to um not impeding traffic. Or disrupting pedestrian flow. So to the extent that a a site plan would come in and show a drive-through that has the potential to create a problem in that regard. I think the zoning administrator could still say, no, you need to modify your site plan to not create that problem. But if it doesn't create any of those problems, I don't see any authority for the zoning administrator to say no.
And the problems that you're saying are impeding traffic flow or what's the other?
Well, it was up on the screen, a second.
It was on the screen. Can we put that back on the screen, please? Yeah, so uh, this is in uh G, section G. So and if an application demonstrates that it does not impede traffic flow or impair traffic flow. Or impair pedestrian flow or obstruct vision for intersecting streets, driveways, sidewalks or other traffic areas. Then the application, then the drive-through must be permitted. And so the question is. Is that an adequate standard to protect, to address the public safety issues that may uh maybe um. Created by a drive-through uh of this sort, and I don't know the answer to that.
I I think staff would be put in a tough position. Um, I do think it would be difficult for us to to find. A mobile food vending to not impair traffic if, for example, the drive-through opening. Was having traffic stop within an access aisle of a painted area, you know, painted access aisle for the parking lot configuration. Um, so I I think, you you know, again, you'd put the staff people into a situation without standards. Um, and probably would err on the side of caution, but then ultimately would be challenged because there would be a disagreement about that interpretation at some point.
And and that is, yes, that's one of the concerns with with this approach is that. Because it's not a clear black and white test, uh, it would be subject to, I suppose. And that's, that's one of the risks. So that's all I wanted to get on the table. Make sure people understand. This is a staff level review. So you've got one, you've got one person reviewing the plans, sitting in his office. And having to make a judgment call based on the application submitted and and based on this language in the ordinance.
Alright, are there any council members that have not spoke on this issue that would like to do so?
Mr. Commander?
Um, I didn't see who was first.
Um, Joyce, maybe?
Sure, go ahead. Uh, person Takowski and then Hunt.
Um, I I don't know if this is germane, so you'll have to decide, but the very last page of our packet on this issue. It describes in-vehicle sales and service uh requirements, how? And that that has things like um buffer, you know, buffer park or yeah, buffer zones. Buffer yards. Uh, how does that relate to what we have? Has that, is uh, is our new um. Ordinance going to replace that or would the in-service regulations still apply?
So what you're looking at, Alder Person Takowski, is what's in the code right now relating to drive-throughs for. Principal uses. I believe it's a conditional use. Now, this is based off of my memory and I'm looking at your code right now. But that's what applies to buildings. Um, and the ordinance that we're talking about today would not have any direct impact. On the existing requirements for in-vehicle sales in other contexts.
I guess I was wondering if it were the other way around, where this would inform uh some uh. Requirements for uh the temporary situation. Thank you. I don't know if everyone has seen this, but it's a, it's very thorough, so.
And then Alder Person Hunt, you were on deck.
Yeah, I was uh thinking that um if we could ask the planning commission to add some language. That specified some spatial measurements, you know, um, I'm thinking in terms of. You know, there needs to be room for X number of vehicles, uh, you know, X number of feet from driveways. Whatever the planning commission saw as the. Safe establishment of an area the size needed to operate a drive-through. It wouldn't matter which parking lot it's in, it should have, it should be something that could apply to every parking lot. Or every site, but I think you could create uh additional wording that would. Help the uh staff member very clearly determine whether or not a site meets the uh. Requirements needed to operate safely because of the uh size and uh, you know. How how near you are to driveways and traffic flow and how much you're possibly, you know, reducing visibility and that sort of thing. But I think some extra wording along those lines would uh kind of address Regina's concern. Otherwise, if you don't have something like that concretely established. A person could apply and be turned down just because of the uh lack of clarity. So I think some wording would help.
Well, at this point, there's, so there's an amendment on the table to remove the drive-through language from all three sections of the ordinance. Anybody have any other thoughts related to the amendment? Alright, so hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No. No.
Oh.
I think you guys do a roll call.
I think you're probably right. Uh, Holly, when you're ready.
Caravelo.
No.
You.
No.
Eileen.
No.
Hirsch.
No.
Hunt.
Hi.
Jensen. Legaki.
Aye.
Mieski.
No.
Reeves.
No.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Takowski.
No.
And Vinagis.
Aye.
Uh, that motion here, or that motion fails on a vote of eight to four.
Okay, so that takes us back to the original motion. Um, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe the ice have it. Thank you very much. That was definitely a a good conversation and it's something that, you know, we'll continue to monitor. And and see what else might be out there. Um, you know, I think definitely there's potential in the future where. You know, we might see more examples of this, so we'll keep our eyes open for that. We'll move on to the next item then, and that would be uh ordinance fourteen of twenty twenty-one. And this one here also comes as a second reading from the plan commission. Um, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, this is ordinance fourteen of twenty twenty-one. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of a parcel at the west end of Isham Street in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I so move.
Is there a second? There's a second. Okay, go ahead, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is, as we discussed at last meeting, this is a request to rezone from SR six. Single-family residential to TR six, two-family residential.
Alright, thought I had it up there. Sorry about that. Um, any questions or comments on this one?
And just to be clear, this also, this amendment also includes the. Uh, trail dedication, which wasn't in their original one that, but was modified since the original reading, if I'm not mistaken. Or between the original plan and it coming to council.
Yeah, that actually shows where parkland could be dedicated. Uh, this doesn't actually create the parcels other than. It it allocates the zoning across the land in this area. So when this comes back for a certified survey map. Or a a plat, then it would be able to be accomplished and dedicated at that time.
Thank you.
And that was based on feedback we received um at the plan commission as well as the Park and Rec Commission. And the developer was uh, you know, worked with us to to create that. So we certainly appreciate that feedback. And we try to incorporate that in these plans as much as we can. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. And the next item is R seventy-nine of twenty twenty-one. And this one also comes from the plan commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, this is R seventy-nine, twenty twenty-one. A resolution by the common council of the city of Stoughton, conditionally approving the preliminary plat of fifty-one West. And I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a request by Bob Dvorak for preliminary plat approval for the fifty-one West development. On the northwest, I guess, side of town and uh. For further enlightenment, I'm sure uh Plan Director Shale would. Share more specifics with us if needed.
Certainly, the preliminary plat that's included in your packet reflects some uh minor alterations that were identified by the the. Plan commission earlier and have been incorporated into here. Um, so slightly like a name change on the west side of. The development area, the grading plan being included and and the like, but I think the resolution outlines. Requirements that are very consistent with preliminary plat reviews for other other developments as well. The conditions would have to be satisfied. The conditions would have to be satisfied prior to the final plat being. Signed, so there's a number of conditions that we think are quite appropriate for moving this forward, but yet protecting us before the final plat would be signed.
And you might notice that, you know, one of the feedback that we received even from the. Some of the conceptual that we had was to try to provide more curvature to the. Retention pond basins, and we've been able to do that on some of them, the developers and their team has been able to do that without. You know, a change in parkland dedication, so we're really pleased that they were able to, to address, you know, some of them issues and. You know, that's another area that, you know, we're going to be, you know, a focus of ours moving ahead on these developments. Any questions or comments on this one from Alders? Hearing none, all in the favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. Next item is a sale report for the city of Stoughton on our promissory nor notes. And I know Director Friedel did a presentation at the finance committee earlier. How would you like to handle this one, Jamie, and you want to screen?
Um, sure, we, yeah, I can do that.
All right, so this was based on a previous council approval. Um, and Jamie's just gonna kind of walk us through it and let you know where we landed, and I think it's good news.
Yeah, it's very good news, so I'll, I'll move through this pretty quickly. I think everybody remembers back in early May, I think it was at the first meeting in May. We had set the parameter sales for this year's debt issuance, again, this is pretty small debt issuance, that, that issuance, all things considered. But at the end of the day, you, you can see I highlighted just a couple key points here, the first one being the rating that Moody's gave us this year. It's a double A too, that's no change from, from previous years. The full report starts on page seven, if you want to read it, it's, it's a pretty easy read. It's a pretty good read, actually, kind of tells you what we're doing right, things we can do better. Um, and things that we have to look forward in, in terms of our bond rating. Number of bids, you can see we received six bids this year, that's, that's quite a few bids for this, this type of debt issue. Just for, for reference, we received four last year, so six is pretty phenomenal number, actually. You can see the low bidder here is U M Bank out of Kansas City, Missouri. I've never heard of them, but Eller said they've been pretty active lately in the, in the municipal market. Um, and the low bid came in at one point zero five eight percent for the true interest cost. Just for reference, last year we're at one point one five five, so really good news, we even beat last year's low amount. The max parameter that the council set back in May was set at two point five percent, so you can see we, we were pretty conservative coming into this, so. Good news, you really can't beat a true, true interest cost of one percent, it's, it's starting near free money at that point. Um, and the other max bid and maturity schedule parameters were all met as well within this, this debt issue. Um, and with the, with the interest rate, the lower issuance costs and the premium itself, we were able to reduce this bond issue or debt issue by about twenty-five thousand dollars from the original. Original plan, I'll kind of go through, touch on a couple other things. The winning bid here is, is, is shown, it's the very first bidder here, U M Bank of Kansas City, you can see the coupon rate and then the re-offering yield. What kind of work our way down, this gives you an idea of where we were at the preliminary presentation when we set that parameters resolution and you can see kind of working your way down, everything worked out. These re-offering premiums and bid premium deposited debt service, it's really, it's a mechanism. Used by the underwriters to offer a higher interest rate to investors and it really just entices them to pay more for the notes. They end up getting a little bit more, but at the end of the day, that money comes to us and we put it right, right back into the, the debt service fund to pay back the principal, or the interest on that, on that premium, so. It's just really a mechanism used to, to make these notes a little bit more attractive. But at the end of the day, working through issues, expenses, you can see we're a little, aimed a little bit high on those two in the original amount, so everything worked out there and that. With, with the premium and the reduced issuance costs, we were able to reduce this, this issue by twenty-five thousand dollars total. Which is good news, kind of working down, I won't walk you through the schedule, you've seen this type of schedule a number of times. But in the kind of pink shaded area, those are the final results with the general obligation notes of twenty twenty-one. The preliminary planning difference here is highlighted in yellow down below, and you can see where we were able to reduce that debt issue size by about twenty-five thousand dollars. Kind of where the, the interest cost does come in higher than our preliminary amount, but again, when we factor in the premium of that seventy-six thousand dollars, it goes right back into our debt service fund. We actually end up almost seventy thousand dollars less in total debt service for the actual debt issuance that we did this year versus what we, we presented at the, the parameter. Resolution, which was obviously just forecast or estimates at that point in time. But all in all, good news, you know, one percent true interest cost, we were able to reduce the size of the debt issue is very, very successful sale. Um, I don't think there's much else in this report that we can look at, you know, we've, we've touched on deck capacity. We'll talk about that more during the C I P process, but you can see where we're at, we're right around sixty percent, give or take of our, our deck capacity. Which is good news, you can see it's kind of been going down. Um, and then this is the credit report that I referenced that starts on page seven, obviously won't go through it in any detail, but it is a pretty easy read. Uh, and worth taking, taking a look at, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions from any of the Alders on this?
Just congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good year, obviously a good market for this, so we'll hopefully that continues.
Thank you for the good news.
Because this process has gone fairly smoothly, I think it's, should be at least adopted as the standard moving forward for this type of debt issue.
All right, thanks for the positive comments, we'll move on to the next item then, uh, because no action is required on this one. And the next item is resolution. Right here, R eighty of twenty twenty-one, and that one. I'll put that on the screen here. And that one is coming from the finance committee.
All right, thank you, Mayor, R eighty, twenty twenty-one. Resolution authorizing proper city official to fund fifty percent of the cost. Associated with installing a door access control system at the youth center using building maintenance funds, so moved.
Second.
And there's a motion in a second, all the person Schumacher.
All right, it looks like, I mean, the impact to us, or at least into the building maintenance fund, would be about five thousand dollars. To install this door access control system. That doesn't have, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we'd be splitting the cost with the friends of the youth center and there's multiple people that use the building. And we just think it's more secure if we have key fobs. We had a request at least a year ago, it might have been longer, Director Glenn can get into that, but. At that time, we were gonna put fobs on all the doors, and what we did is we decided to. Re-quoted, rebid it, and only do two of the doors, because there's really only a couple main users there, so that was able to reduce the cost. Anything I'm missing, Director Glenn?
No, I think you covered everything. Yeah, the original proposal is to do all four doors, and that was done last year, and. The cost savings is probably around four thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry, thank you. Next item is. R eighty-one of twenty twenty-one, this one is, came through the finance committee, and all the person Schumacher.
All right, R eighty-one, twenty twenty-one. A resolution authorizing the police department to purchase a new speed board using contingency funds, and so moved.
Second.
In a second, okay, all the person Schumacher.
All right, so to order this new speed board, which their other one has either failed or is, is in the process of failing. Thirty-two thousand dollars to be the, the impact for it money-wise. Um, and that will come out of contingency, which we had bumped up our contingency funds in the last budget cycle, so that we have. The budget was a hundred thousand dollars for that, so we, we do have enough to cover that, this was an unexpected expense for police department.
All right, and I see Chief Luck is on here, and I'd always like to hear him talk to an issue, so go ahead, chief.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief, I was asked to present some information on what kind of data the speed board will capture. Just to clarify, our, our current speed board is completely dead in the water, and actually, we have already disposed of it. Because it had no possibility of repair. This new device is very similar to the old one, it captures. Date, time, speed, number. It has analytical capabilities similar to what we use with the public works traffic counter. That gives us percentiles, high speeds, low speeds, and allows us to make, you know, pinpoint. Particular times that speeding may be more prevalent than others, so that we can more efficiently. Use our resources to address those issues, and of course, it has the large display of speed when somebody goes through it. The technology differs a little from the traffic counter in the fact that the speed board uses radar and the traffic counter is a pneumatic tube that you drive over. The speed board, this, this trailer also has that capability, but we have not. Decided not to order any of the pneumatic tubes to go with it, they're quite a little more extensive to put out, not as mobile as they could, they need to be taped down to the roadway, et cetera. The other feature that this device has is that it also will be equipped with an automated license plate reader device. Which will clap, capture the plate number plus the date and time and the speed of that vehicle. This is new technology to a speed board, I'm not sure if there's anybody else that has this yet, but it's an up and coming technology. We envision using that data to send out courtesy letters to people that maybe. Have went through there with excessive speeds, and I, I know as a, as a parent, I would have been really happy to get a letter from the police department explaining that they saw. My vehicle run, that being driven by a child going through the, the speed at board area and. Speeding excessively, because statistically, we know that, that speeding increases the risk of crash and also increases the risk of, of. Injury or death. I presented some of the, the. Materials as far as the analytical data to public safety a couple times, using the data that comes out of the. Traffic counter that the public works department utilizes, and this will have the same type of technology, and it'll be able to tell us the. Percentiles of traffic that are in compliance, the very high speed during the reporting period. Um, and then so forth, as far as all the data goes, we will likely not have a modem connected to it, so. We, we're, we're kind of debating on that portion of it, because having a modem that would be. Sending the signal out to, let's say, to the police department so that it could be monitored, is not real cost-effective yet. The cost of the, that modem would be quite expensive and an ongoing expense that. We just wouldn't have anybody able to monitor it on a regular basis, so the data will be. Downloaded whenever we go and manually download it to a device such as a laptop. Or we bring the unit in for servicing and recharging the batteries. At that time, the data will be uploaded and then we'll hope to have somebody that can go through the data, prepare a bunch of reports and things like that, the reports are really handy for. Neighborhoods when we get a speeding concern, it helps to really get the, you know, we all have. Perceptions on how fast vehicles are going, and it's nice to have real hard data that, that either confirms or. Adjust that speed to what's really occurring there, and again, it gives us a setting of, you know, whether there's, there's an, there's an issue there with speeding. But it also helps to inform the public on what kind of challenges are occurring in the neighborhoods. On our old board, I can tell you is one of the most requested items in the police department, it was out continually during good weather months. We're hoping that that will continue, in fact, and we already have a waiting list of locations that we want to push forward now. Other than, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I would say that, other than Ollie, this is probably the most requested item.
Yeah.
Other than what, Mr. Mayor?
Ollie the dog.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Rachel.
Um, are there any? Have any privacy concerns been mentioned by citizens, or, I'm just thinking about the. Cost benefit analysis between the new technology of being able to read license plate versus, is there some current technology that works without? That you currently use, do you have some of these? I guess I'm asking how many of these do you have currently, or is this the only one?
Well, we, we have a automated license plate reader mounted on one of our squad cars, and that is a live device. It feeds data to a association group based out of Greenfield. That all of the departments that participated in the program, all the data sent to one spot. And then it can be analyzed by our detectives usually, I mean detectives are usually the only ones that. They use that data, but it also can be used to generate a, a hot sheet. So stolen vehicles can be entered on there, which automatically alert the officer. If a vehicle driving by or that they have driven by is stolen without the officer having to manually input the data. We've only had the device for about six months, and so. We're, you know, we're, we're confident that the data is, you know, pretty good and you being used wisely. Uh, I know that the other municipalities that have used the device are, are very happy with it. We haven't had any success stories yet, and that's probably good news that we, it hasn't captured any stolen vehicles in the city. But that potential is there, when it comes to privacy issues with that data. That is easily deniable to open records requests because it is Department of Transportation-related data. Um, and there are some, there's some case law out there that allows us to not release any of that data to the public. That is captured and it can known to be used for law enforcement purposes. The other part of that is, is that we, I mean, we'll put it in with the rest of our data collection. Policies, and unless it's related to an incident, the data is purged after about a hundred and twenty days.
Thank you, and do you have any of these, did you say you have other speed boards currently, and if so, how many?
No, this is, this will be the only speed board, we had one before and it's the one that has quit working and has been disposed of already, so this will be our one and only board.
And how much was, is the board without the license plate reading technology?
Oh, let's see here. It would be just quickly about eight thousand dollars less, almost nine thousand dollars less.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Oh, go ahead, all the person Reese.
Um, and Chief Luck, I know you told us in finance, but I don't remember, and it could be in our packet, but can you remind us how long it is going to take to, to get this in, it's, it's a bit of a backlog, isn't it?
Yeah, they're telling us it's eight to ten weeks.
And I just wanted to add that I, I actually really like the license plate reader, I think it has more teeth if somebody gets a letter. Um, and I, and most of you have probably read about that little six-year-old that was shot in a road rage incident, and. Um, I hope we never have anything like that, but if there's a serious incident, if we happen to catch it, a license plate, I think that makes. Your job a lot easier in the police department, so I, I think, you know. If, if somebody's just driving along, then they probably don't need to be concerned about their license plate being read, but if they're speeding, then I think it'll be very helpful for the community.
And maybe just to clarify, that no enforcement action can be taken for a. And maybe just to clarify that no enforcement action can be taken for a traffic enforcement purposes regarding that plate that's that's captured. So I just want to make sure that that's clear so people don't have a misconception that we can issue a citation, which we cannot do.
Thank you.
A question.
All the person may ask you.
So how long have we known that the old board was beginning to fail, that was failing?
Well, we we were advised last year when we were putting it away that it was starting to go. We thought we could eke out one more year. It was my intention to have this in the capital budget for next year. And then to actually at the suggestion of the mayor, he suggested that we go forward and and put this through as a contingency item because it is so requested by the public and it's a real benefit to traffic safety. But it had been our intention on replacing it in 2022.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 None opposed, that motion does carry. Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking that out of contingency funds because it would have been a long wait if we would have waited until January to order the thing. So we appreciate that. Next item, R eighty-two of 2021, this one went through Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so this is R eighty-two, 2021 Resolution Authorizing and Directing to Proper City Officials to approve a Class B fermented beverage malt beverage license for Stoughton Opera House Friends Association. That's S O H F A sofa, Paul Lawrence Agent for the premise located premises located at three eighty-one East Main Street. And I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, Alder Person Jensen, go ahead.
Yes, this was, um, went through Public Safety and we had a seven zero vote on this. It's obviously with the Opera House, so the changes that are being made there, they're offering beverages during their performances. So they need to have a license, and this is their request. I don't believe that there were objections from the police department, and I don't think there was anything from the clerk as well, but they may comment if they wish.
Okay, and before I I turn it over to Director Brown, I really wanted to acknowledge Clerk Lick. She spent a fair amount of time on a couple of occasions investigating this. This is newer territory. And and Bill can kind of fill in the blanks on what it actually is. And and also, we worked with Director Gillingham to get insurance secured so we could do this as well. So I wanted to acknowledge that before we get into the discussion. Bill, I see you're on the line. You want you want to speak to this issue?
Um, I don't think that there is a lot more to add outside of the obvious, which is that this would be for sofa to have a permit to be able to sell beer at the Opera House. The interesting part about it that the mayor alluded to is that, which is actually the next item, which is that once we've approved this, then the idea would be for the city to designate sofa as the concessionaire for the building that the Opera House is in with the state that then gives the license back to the city that then can give it to sofa. So and technically, it's an airport slash public space license. So as I pointed out prior, in theory, it might be designating the Opera House as an airport as well.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
I just, uh, Mayor, file number? Uh, yeah, I I thought we spoke to it. I believe the file number is incorrect and should end in a one and not a zero.
I'll make that correction, but it does say 2020 instead of 2021.
Anything else, Jean?
I can't believe I beat Brett to the punch.
It was close.
The one other thing I had with it was in the in the actual license application, the the redaction is a bit hidden this. You do have the home address covered up above, but there's several instances down lower where the where Paul's address is clearly apparent.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and that takes us to R eighty-three, Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, R eighty-three, 2021 Resolution to Authorize Application of a Public Facility Permit to Allow for the Sale of Intoxicating Liquor and Appointing Stoughton Opera House Friends Association, SOFA, as concessionary City of Stoughton, Dane County, and I would move for approval.
And a second. All right, there's a second. Anything to add to this one, Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, just Public Safety did approve this on a seven zero vote. And like Bill was saying, this is a kind of the the hoops we have to jump through or to to get this all to happen. And I don't think there's any, anything more I can say on that.
All right, and before we vote, I really want to thank Bill and his team for doing the live stream. I think that was really a successful program, and I'm hoping you could build on that. But I know the people that were on there, including myself, enjoyed it. So thanks for doing that. And when when can we have a tour?
Oh, a tour of the.
Of the Opera House, so we can see all the improvements.
Oh, if you want to see all the improvements, you better wait until August to come by.
Oh.
Yeah, I know, you can come by anytime you want, if you want to.
I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about everyone else. August?
Yeah, I'll have more comfy furniture by then.
Oh, you're replacing the seating?
Oh, no, we're we're just getting some chairs for the first floor where the mayor's office used to be. We're actually thinking of calling that room the mayor's office, but we're not sure.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, thank you, Bill. The next item is R eighty-four, this one's coming from myself. Who would like to make the motion? I'm looking to appoint two people, one for the Plan Commission to replace all the former older seltzer and then one for the Tree Commission. And we had two candidates that applied, and it's great that we have interest from community members. So we're gonna, I submitted the two names for your for your confirmation.
I'd move to approve.
I can.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? The applications are in here. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, thank you. So the next four, I don't know if you want to do them separately or in one motion? Is it, they're basically all for the outdoor cafes?
Just a second, Mayor, could you, could we stand by for just one second? I need to change my hearing aid battery.
Okay, yeah, we'll hang out for you. So as I was saying, the next four are all the same. And I wanted to take a second to acknowledge that Holly and Desi, Desi's in our planning department. They both sent out letters and did follow up to make sure we could get as many of the downtown businesses to fill out their their applications as we could. Having said that, there's a couple that have not yet that we still anticipate. So hopefully, we'll get them for the next meeting. So we've been in contact, but I'm pleased that, you know, right up to the bell, they continue to to try to to work with the bill, the business owners to get these in so they can continue that service. Let me know when you're ready, Greg. Looks like it'll take just a moment. You guys want to take these individually or all at once?
Well, I think we need to do them individually.
Okay, so we'll wait for Greg, and that's what we'll do then.
Okay, my apologies, and that happens at the most inopportune time. I would like to, if we. I'm sorry?
I think we're gonna do them individually.
Individually, okay, I was, I would go ahead and suggest that we do them, you know, as one, but that's fine, if you want to do them individually.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Maybe R eighty-five, 2021, authorizing directing proper city officials to approve premises description. Amendment amendment for the sidewalk cafe for fire, is it? Eyes, bees, LLC, business as Fahrenheit, three sixty-four, located at three sixty-four East Main Street. And I'd move for approval.
Is there a second? All right, um, any discussion on this?
Yeah, obviously, this one and the next three did not come to Planning Commission. They bypassed us, our commission, or, or, excuse me, not planning, Public Safety. They came after our our meeting. And we need to, according to the attorney, we need to bring these directly to council. So that's why you're not seeing any vote from the planning, or, excuse me, Public Safety and, let's see, I don't believe there were any issues on this. So I'll let the police chief, like, speak to it, or Holly, if she has anything to say on it.
There were no issues on my end. The planning department approved the site plan, and everything else is in the packet.
All right, any questions on this one?
I have questions actually on all four of these coming up. Regarding the minimum five-foot spacing, and some folks have mentioned, I've noticed it myself and some other folks have mentioned it to me, where they've had to essentially, I don't know if you want to call it a hopscotch, but they don't feel that there's a, the way some businesses have placed tables, they actually, there is not five feet of public right-of-way space in between, like a per, a patron sitting at one of these tables. Once, depending on how the tables are set up and how the chairs are set up, once a person is sitting at one of the chairs at the table, you go from having five feet of space to having basically two feet of space, which doesn't work. You know, if somebody's walking their dog, if two people are walking down Main Street, a lot of people have told me they have to cross blocks, and then they go a block, and then they cross the street to go down the next block because they're, you know, they they, the spacing is too close and there's just not enough. And I'm just kind of wondering about the, if all of these fit with the, and and last time I looked at it, I was kind of like, hmm, I wonder if the, I think I brought this up before about the definition of preservation of an unobstructed path with a minimum pavement width of five feet. And like I said, in some cases, this one, I can see where if there's, uh, on the diagram, if there are four people seated at the tables that are closest to Main Street, say, one of the patrons is is sitting, then they're taking up, you know, they're three feet into the five feet. So there's basically two feet for somebody to walk past. I think that's a little, that's a little narrow.
All right, well, thanks for pointing that out. So on this one, it sounds like it, you know, we'll have to go out there and and see what's happening. And if if what you're describing is happening, we'll have to, you know, talk to the business owner and and see if they can figure out a way to, you know, make sure that the chairs stay where they're supposed to, to provide that that clearance that's required and and, you know, it's consistent with their site plan. So appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking in this particular case, if the the two tables closest to the building, I mean, I like all these establishments as well, I just, some other folks have said they're kind of, if the two tables closest to the building were a two-top and the other two tables had three, or they were configured somehow so that the patron sitting there was not protruding, I guess, into the five-foot right-of-way space.
Okay, any thoughts on that, chief?
Well, just maybe a point of clarification, what what you're approving here in these ordinances is the alcohol premise description amendment. It really doesn't have anything to do with the seating there. That would be a zoning issue, and that part of it is is done by staff in the zoning office. So I think that's something that they could probably address pretty easily if instructed to. But just for clarification, this is only describing the alcohol premise description amendment.
Okay, so I'll have a conversation tomorrow with the zoning department and see what they have in place to monitor this. And if there's improvements that can be made, we'll certainly make them.
But Mayor, if I could, just maybe one more thing, just so that the council is aware, in our limited amount of sit-in my that we had this year, it became very evident early on that we're definitely going to have to suspend sidewalk cafes during sit-in my, at least on the Friday, Saturday, until, you know, probably at least after five or six on Saturday, and then all day on Sunday as well. There just isn't enough space for pedestrians in the sidewalk cafe. A lot of people were walking out into the street with the amount of traffic that we have during sit-in my, that could be very.
All right, thank you for that. Anything else on this one? All right, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Six, Alder Person Jensen, you want to introduce this one as well?
Absolutely. Resolution eighty-six, 2021, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a premises description amendment for a sidewalk cafe for Brownwood LLC, doing business as Roxy's Resto Bar, located at two oh eight West Main Street. And I'd move for approval.
Second.
In a second, any questions or comments on this one?
So I I guess I need some clarification. Last time, Chief Luck said they were only approving the kind of alcohol permit, but then the resolution talks about directing the the premise description. So can I have some clarification on that?
So the premise description relates to the alcohol license. So you're amending the premise description within their liquor license to allow for this outdoor area.
Thank you.
All right, any other clarifications on this one?
And just, I'm I'm going to bring up once again, individually, I think on all these, my same concern about the the preservation of the pedestrian right-of-way area. So planning, I'll look at that, I understand Chief Luck's explanation, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
This one appears to only allow for tables and notes six feet or six feet nine. It doesn't appear they have the plan for the chairs around them.
That's what it appears. I didn't talk directly to this one, but I'll certainly look on the way home.
I believe that they are if you go to the, the first page of the application, I think it says how many chairs. I guess it does not say chairs, but I think that that is their intention, is to allow the chairs. I don't think they have standing tables there.
All right, any other comments or concerns about this one?
So my understanding, Mayor, is that we'll be approving the serving of the alcohol and zoning that's going to go take that time and energy and be able to monitor and police spacing and the safety of pedestrians. And I am alluding to, I'm alluding to our prior issue.
Yeah.
To be transparent, little, little hard to take all that in. And I just wanted to express that respectfully, because I, I believe our planning department is, is working well. I just see a discrepancy here.
Do lead order?
Thank you for letting me say that.
No problem. Anybody else on this one? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, R eighty-seven, Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, R eighty-seven, twenty twenty-one, authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve a premises description amendment for a sidewalk cafe for Viking Group Pub LLC, doing business as Viking Group, located at two eleven East Main Street, and I'd move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. This one looks a little more elaborate. Any, any questions or comments, Alder Person Johnson?
No, again, same thing came to, you know, didn't go through committee, so didn't have a chance to look at it until it got into the packet here, so.
Yeah, the other thing you'll notice on some of these, and you might get some feedback, is, you know, during COVID, we were pretty flexible as far as allowing lights and things and they were attached to poles and trees and whatnot. And really, the ordinance isn't really as flexible. So if you get any feedback, let us know. We can always, you know, review this ordinance, just like any other one. But, you know, for now, they've been kind of told that, you know, we want to mostly just focus on the tables and chairs and make sure we're within the guidelines that the council set.
Tim, could I ask, are you, are we looking at the additional signage that has been out as well?
Yeah, I believe that's part of the requirement.
Yeah, but I mean, there, there's been some signs out there that are not to ordinance. And I, I know we let a lot of that go by. I'm just wondering if that's being addressed to, as well.
I believe so, but I'll follow up on that as well.
I wanted to ask. The, there seems to be a difference between the description in the application and the diagram. The number of tables specifically and I'm not sure if the numbers next to tables are meant to represent the number of people seated at the tables. But if those are indeed four top tables, diagrammed the same as two top tables, I could definitely see where we could easily run into that five-foot space.
Yeah, it looks like they might, I think they have the correct number of tables, but the number of chairs might be off.
I apologize, I haven't taken that.
Because you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven tables, I think. But there's twenty-eight chairs out of twenty-four.
I count, I count nine tables.
Nine?
In the di.
Yeah.
Yeah, I count nine tables in the diagram, and this one definitely, if those are four tops, again, to be a broken record, there are five-foot pedestrian right-of-way goes to essentially a foot.
So would you like to approve this as is, or do you want to put a number on the tables and chairs that are consistent with the application or consistent with the map?
To go with what's in the written application as to what's on the map, because the map, the, the illustration seems that's a, that's a lot of human.
I would agree with Phil.
All right, so Matt, do we need to somehow amend the motion to reflect that, or how should we do this?
Can, can you just tell me where you're at? I'm sorry, I was distracted during the last few words of discussion.
So the application says seven tables and twenty-four chairs, but the map shows more than that. So I think the desire is to go with what's on the application and they'll have to redo the map.
Yeah, how about the, well, so I would approve it, so to show a condition that they submit a revised map that is consistent with the application.
All right, does somebody want to make that amendment?
I would make that amendment.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, that's a nice catch. Any discussion on that? Is that Chief?
Yeah, Mayor, just I wanted to point out, in the diagram that they have, that's only eighteen chairs and it's consistent with keeping the center aisle of the pedestrian way clear. And I don't know how you want to address that, at least that's my count, was eighteen chairs. Even though they have twenty-four chairs in their written description and seven tables, they got nine tables and eighteen chairs here.
So how are you feeling?
One of the questions was whether these tables marked as four will actually have four chairs next to them despite the diagram.
Oh, that could be very possible, correct?
Well, it's possible they have two chairs and two standing, maybe. I, I'm not really sure what this means.
Looks like it's intended to be a, like a four-person, like a four-top and a two-top, is what they call it in the restaurant business.
Right, but the chairs, I'm assuming are in blue, and they only show two chairs at the four-top.
Is Robbie still on the call? I know that the planning department helped Viking Group Make this site plan.
I think he dropped off.
Okay.
Well, so I, I think that they have to be at least at or below the, the maximum that they have on the application. Does that?
Tables and twenty-four chairs.
The numbers on the site plan, if you take the big red numbers, those add up to twenty-eight, if I added correctly.
That's correct.
I liked Matt's, Matt's language. I think, I feel comfortable with that.
All right, so we'll go with that. I think there was a motion and a second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go with.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure, Holly, did you catch it?
No, I don't know. I know there is a motion and a second, but I don't know what it.
The motion was to approve the application on the condition that the applicant submit a revised site plan that is consistent with the narrative in the application.
And if it is, we're good, but it doesn't appear like it is, but we'll find out.
Yeah, even though if those were all two tops, it would be eighteen chairs. Which is yet another number.
Yep. Well, and, and he'll have to go with what's in the application, and if that's not satisfied, he can always come back at the next meeting and apply again. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Are you guys good with it? All right, so all, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed? So that carries, so it's really the original motion, which became the amendment, basically, would be on the table right now. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and one last one, Greg.
Okay, this is number eighteen, it's resolution eighty-eight, twenty twenty-one, authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve premises description amendment for a sidewalk cafe for Famous Yetis LLC, doing business as Windigo Tavern, located at one twenty-one East Main Street, and I'd vote for approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
I'm just going to throw my same thing.
There, now I can see it.
Well, it looks like this one, and they're at least gathered that they're not, the tables aren't directly opposite one another, that they're at a different angle, that hopefully when people are pulling out their chairs, they're not won't impede that five-foot mark as much as if they were back-to-back.
Well, it's definitely in their interest to make sure that they arrange them properly, because you know, if we start getting complaints, then that's really, you know, we're going to have to revisit this.
You don't need to use the slide rule to calculate all the chairs and tables with this one.
All right.
Just one thing, Mayor?
What, go ahead.
If, if I can, before you vote, because you're probably going to adjourn real quickly, and since it is alcohol-related, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Holly for all the hard work that she did to make these forms up with Desi and to streamline this process and deal with the transition from the emergency order to this ordinance. And it's been a pleasure to work with Holly over the years and I wish her the best of luck in the future.
All right, thank you. All right, any, all in favor of this one, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion does carry.
Second.
And a second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Holly, thank you.